We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGirity.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Now we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Move to adopt the agenda and to run. Any questions or comments that we can add? Call the roll, please. Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. This is the first ever committee of the evening that invite the public to address the mission. We ask that you put the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. We of course ask that you address all of your concerns and questions to share. Whoever would like to come up first, we invite you to the microphone. All right, so then we will move on to administrative responses to issues or questions. If there's anything on the agenda, okay? Moving to group of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Any questions or comments on the minutes? Call the roll, please. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
That's.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
All right, general business. Item 9B, adoption of the bond ordinance, DWSRF. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond ordinance for issuance of Series 2024 bonds as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman.
On May 15, 2023, the city formally adopted water system improvement projects to be funded through the state of Michigan Drinking Water State Revolving Fund in the form of a loan interest loan. The loan is paid to bonds, which must be approved by the Michigan Finance Authority, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and allows me the requirements of the Revenue Bond Act at number 4, 1933. To issue bonds, the city must adopt the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance authorizes the issuance of Series 2024 bonds in an amount not to exceed $37 million for the acquisition, destruction, furnishing, and equipping of improvements for the city's water supply system, including constructing connections to Great Lakes Water Authority, constructing a ground storage tank, constructing a booster station replacing water mains, abandoning water mains to network the existing water filtration plant, and abandoning the existing water filtration plant and leak-in tank, together with all related equipment, appropriations, and attachments. The bond may be used for design, acquisition, construction, demolition, furnishing, equipping of improvements for the water supply system of the city. The Series 2024 bond is payable through the net revenues of the city's water supply system. That is expected to be sold to the MFA and payable in 30 annual principal installments at an interest rate of 2%. The closing for the Series 2024 bond will be September 6, and the city can begin requesting draws on the bond after that date. This might seem a little bit like the A W since we just took this with CWSRF not too long ago. And with this again as Jeff Arnaud and Emily Barr and Andy Hill and Stephen A. because this came up. Jeff, I don't know if you want to blow everybody away for what he did last time. Do Jeff do that to you?
You act as like a recording. Thanks for having me here. I'm trying to you again. This will feel, as Greg indicated, much like the last transaction on the clean water side. Same statutory authority, similar programs administered through Eagle and Michigan Department of Treasury cooperatively. Bigger transaction between dollars. And you know, going forward, it's the same type of transaction. It's a revenue bond, so you're secured by revenues of the system. One thing to note, there is a city backup general obligation pledge. The reason for that is that the city has an existing general obligation bond rating. The existing companies are advised on this. This is optimal for the city because it allows you to rely on that rating. The program has a vested great rating requirement, which can meet a number of different rate ways. Relying on your existing general obligation rating is the least expensive. You don't have to be a pro rating set to keep the process moving more forward or streamline that way. But otherwise, as a legal matter, it looks very similar. Tax kinds of issues are the same. So I think with that, I'll zip it up and take any questions that we can.
When I was looking through, I noticed, well, I didn't notice, any kind of penalty if you pay it off early? Is there any other universe that the, you know, that additional funding from these other sources? I don't need, you know.
You can pay it off early without penalty. Also, depending on when those other sources may come, it's a big question. It is comments if not now. It's a drawdown loan. So if other sources become available before you draw all of your funds, you sort of avoid the problem of how you prepay because you don't have to draw all of it in the first place. And that would then obviously lower the.
How much of the cushion do we have right now, given the current projections from Congress?
We've projected enough, covered what you've here as the vendor.
So this doesn't, yes, right now, the whole thing?
Yeah, this assumes nothing else available to do it. You can always borrow less, draw less from other sources. It's much harder to adjust in that way. If we undersold it, let's say, or we undersized it, let's call it, based on an optimistic or less conservative or aggressive future, much more difficult. The proceedings are more challenging to upside. Much easier to come in with that cushion and downsize or not take out the full amount.
Right now, we think that 37 million is the max on the. Right. That's, but our estimates are probably a little more than that.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, then just to know that where that puts us about here moving forward, if you're ready to.
Yeah, I guess it's worth like, let's talk about the 37.
Yeah, so as it stands now, the amount that you can borrow from the DWSRF, correct, forgive me. Have you heard back from them about?
I have not, but I can reach back often.
So that would be $34,900,000. And then depending on what program comes back, there's a $1,475,000 still needed, whether the city went up a bet or borrows with an additional borrowing or the program increases to loan amount. You'd be at $36,375,480. So to make it a nice round number, we were going to go 37 million tonight, just in case there's any.
Another question, I'd like to streamline this for a little bit, but when it comes to the bond rating, what bond rating, you didn't have to get a new rating, right? Hear that? Or we have.
Correct. I want to say I haven't looked up. I think it's a double minus that the city has outstanding. And as Jeff said, there is a limited tax general obligation pledge behind this, this revenue bond issue. And by doing that, you can rely on that outstanding rating. If you didn't do that, going out for a credit assessment would be roughly, in comparison to the cost of this project, it's not much. It's probably $30,000 to $40,000.
Yeah.
But figured save where we can and rely on that outstanding rating.
Oh, absolutely.
I just, I guess I just have a comment. When this all started a year ago, we started off with $42 million to go with Great Lakes, $17 million. Oh, no, $42 million to build our own, $17 million to go with Great Lakes. Now we're up to $57 million for this water project. And I'm just stunned. I really am. I, I'm like, I read this over and over, Greg, because you warned us you were going to bring us some hefty.
It's not 57, just so let's.
Well, 57, 20 million's forgiven.
No, even the total project's not that much.
So to, just to clarify.
Okay, clarified because it's driving me nuts.
The borrowing that we have to say in this resolution does not include the principal forgiveness. So that's the $34,900. With principal forgiveness, the amount that the city will actually repay to the program, you're at $22,500,000.
Well, that's why I thought we started with that, was 22.
That's the number right now, and you're only talking, there's maybe a million and a half more, depending that we have to figure out where it's coming from, depending on if the program will give more. We're waiting here. But the 22 is what the city would be obligated to pay back. For the purposes of the resolution, we have to go with the full number.
I'm glad, thank you.
Let's talk about.
This, and I'm like.
You should call last week. You probably suffered all weekend.
I did, I did.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good point. I think on the clean water side, we didn't have any principal forgiveness.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so let's talk about what that really means. The, the state is offering grants that are available to borrowers that come in a few different forms. In, in, in this program, you have at least, you have one upfront Rescue Plan Act grant. That's just a grant off the front end. Principal forgiveness is like a grant that becomes a grant later. You initially borrow it as part of the borrowing. So that's why the bond will show a higher amount. And when you, for all intents and purposes, finish the project, it then flips into a grant. They're just, the, the condition is, well, we're not going to really make this a grant until we know you've finished the project. And how does the grant turn into a grant? It's pulled off of the amount you owe back in the loan. So that's why, to Stephen's point, you have a significantly lower amount that you actually have to pay back. It just doesn't feel that way until you finish the project.
So the first few years, when we, when, the first few years, we will actually be paying interest on all of it?
Well.
Or on?
Well, remember, it's a drawdown loan. So for those first few, you're only paying what you've, on what you've actually drawn. So those first couple of years, yes, the assumption is you'll draw the full amount, but, but you're not even paying back interest until you've drawn dollars anyway.
Okay.
But how it's scheduled right now, your first principal payment would be due April 1 of 2028. And that's assuming a full draw on day one, which is not going to be the case. But that's still when the principal payment would be. And then the loan forgiveness comes each year throughout the life that they forgive a portion each year. So it's not just forgiven all at once, but throughout the life.
That's better too, because I'm like, oh, so we got to like spike the rates until the end and then crash the rates or something? So not that either, okay.
So you're bringing us good news. Yeah, better news.
We should have left that.
Yeah, that's okay.
You could have left.
That's okay.
Next time we do this.
No. No, yeah. All right, does anyone else have any other questions that have been keeping them up at night? All right, very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for taking care of this for us. All right, well, I don't hear of any other questions or comments. We will call the roll.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 9B, Water System Improvement Resolution.
Move to approve the Water System Improvement Resolution with Dan's Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $36,238,263 as presented.
And support.
Mr. Shipman.
On May 15, 2023, the city formally adopted water system improvement projects funded through the state of Michigan Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program. The city received funding in the amount of $42,050,000 with $20 million in principal forgiveness. The award will be used to connect to the Great Lakes Water Authority to provide drinking water to residents and water customers of the city. All projects awarded under the DWSRF quarter 4.0 must be formally adopted by resolution by the governing body no later than July 16, 2024. Attached for your review is the resolution to award Dan's Excavating Incorporated the contract for water system improvements in the amount of $36,238,263. Please note, the attached contract is subject to review by the city attorney. And it seems a shame that a project this big could be summed up in a paragraph because this thing actually started long before May 15, 2023. And a project of this magnitude and complexity is a marathon. But we've been sprinting.
Yes.
You're not supposed to have to sprint a marathon. And I can't, we were trying to talk about it today, how many obstacles and barricades and twists and turns, not just weekly, daily, sometimes two or three in the same day. And I can't even remember how many people we had to thank to get to the point where we're at. Don't get me wrong, there's a lot to do. But to get to where we're at, you know, there's so many people both within this building and outside of this building that have small part, big part. But nobody had a bigger part than Maria Sedke and her team. And she led this. And without you and your team, Maria, we couldn't have done it, you know? And they were invested like we were. It was, they wanted this as badly or worse than we did. So thank you for that, Maria. Make sure you thank the team.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Definitely our pleasure. And I do want to thank city manager. We wouldn't have gotten to this point without Greg either. I mean, this truly was a, a team effort. I mean, Greg was knocking on doors, trying to get properties. I mean, he was on the phone every day with us. This was definitely a team effort. And thank you. I, I don't, same. It's been a pleasure working with everybody here, especially Greg. So any questions?
So I had to have one. So this $36,238,2, whatever, 36 million. This is under, this will be the 37 million. This, so Dan's doing it all, right?
Dan's doing it all, and then Maria's team is going to make sure they're doing it right.
We'll do the program management. They've got a year to design it, starting in September. They'll design it for a year and they'll start construction September of, if all goes well, September of '25. And it'll be done, if all goes well, at the end of 2028.
It's big stuff.
Scary.
Oh, it's so scary, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a big project.
It's a tremendous.
Dan's, Dan's has put together a good team as the main contractor. They're, you see their trucks everywhere. They're a great company. And they've got a good design team with them. We interviewed them here in the city for a few hours before. We recommended the award, and I think they answered all our questions, right, Greg? And they're excited to, to start the work.
And there are two additional engineering teams in addition to your oversight of the project, right? There, that Dan's is working with, correct?
So we will be working for, for the city. We won't be working for Dan, but Dan, as part of his team, has got three technically, design engineers with different specialties. He's got a team that will be working on the booster station and storage tank, a team that will be designing the water main, and a, a company that does geol, underground, that will help with the directional drilling under the freeway and make sure all this. So he's got three engineering firms with him, plus all his contract subcontractors and suppliers. But we will be working for you, not that.
Yes. There's so many questions, but.
Um, I, I did have.
Yes, please.
Just one that, so we got approved for 42 million from the state. We're using about 37 for this. What, what's, what's the rest of that? What happens there? Is that just in case it runs over or?
No, so the 42 million is what the loan is, but 7 million of that is a grant that kicks in on day one.
Okay.
So that's what they were saying that gets off the top. There's a six or seven million, right?
I think he wants to know the additional cost above that 36 million.
Right, is that? Yeah, yeah, because it's.
So, you know, that includes your engineering up to the.
Okay, that's all the other stuff. It's, it's the property purchase, it's engineering fees, it's environmental investigations, it's all, all of that. It's, yes, yeah, that gets you from the 36, yeah, the 42.
Thank you.
Yes.
Makes sense, thank you.
Over the, what's been spent and what's going to be spent going forward. Yep, sorry.
No, 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 thank you.
Anyone else? I will, I will, oh, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Just a quick question. Does Dan's Excavating abide by some of the labor practices like prevailing wage? And, or was that a part of kind of the investigation?
So because it's, you're getting federal funds and state funds, they have to, they are required to follow Davis Bacon, prevailing wages, all of that, American iron and steel. All of those are requirements of this contract, and they have to comply with it all, yes.
Thank you. We got a waiver.
And as part of our job, will we do verify all these things during construction? So, yep.
Thanks.
Anybody else? I just wanted to add that I, like Greg was saying, the twists and turns of the project are, were enormous. And I, I honestly, I know that there are a lot of things that can happen during the project, but I do feel that Fishbeck has been an excellent partner and has had the city's affordability and best interest in mind. I know that this project was, is definitely more than what everybody anticipated. I still am confident that building our own water plant would have been a tremendous cost above and beyond what this project is. And they have assured us of that. So I, I do feel as though this was probably the most important decision that this commission will make. And this, the city as a whole, this is the most important issue, drinking water, that probably has happened in the last 50 years. I would say that no other issue has been as important as this. And so I'm really proud of everybody who's sitting at this commission because it's not an easy decision. And it certainly wasn't the most popular decision to go with this option. But I do feel as though it's our best chance at water affordability for our residents. So with that, I will call the roll.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGirity.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey. Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item 9C, Purchases and Payments. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of the Metron Farnay water meters as presented, and direct administration request pricing for the installation of the residential sized meters.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman, you want to add on that one?
Sure. As I say, I don't have to read the whole thing, but I, I will for you. So normally purchases and payments is usually a little different scenario than this. This is kind of a little different situation they normally run into. So that's why we kind of separated it out, and I provided such a long cover letter for it. So the utilities department started installing the Metron Farnay water meters roughly 2.5 years ago. And we currently have about 1,500 of those meters in the system. They've worked out extremely well. The meters have many benefits for the city as well as the customers as listed on the attached pages. Of special importance, these meters have an accuracy range between 98.5 and 101.5%. And they maintain very close to that accuracy throughout their lifespan. Annually, the city audit looks at the amount of water produced and compares it to the unit sold to determine the annual water loss. The city's averaged approximately 37% water loss over the last few years. The average water loss for a system of our age and type should be typically 10 to 15%. We wouldn't want to see over 20%. Much of this is attributed to the old style meters, which out of the box have about a 90% accuracy rating, which decreases annually. The average age of our existing meters is approximately 10 to 12 years. With the connection to GLWA scheduled to take place in the next two to three years, it's important to reduce the water loss to normal averages. The city met with Metron Farnay, and they have offered to provide all the meters necessary to outfit the entire city at last year's pricing, which they have an increased pricing for two years. They were due to have a price increase July 1. They will also accept payment of half down now with a second installment a year from now with no interest. So purchasing these meters is one phase of this initiative, installing them is the second phase. Given our current staffing, it would take approximately nine years to complete the installation of the meters. It would not make sense to purchase the meters if we cannot install them in a timely fashion. We solicited pricing from a professional meters incorporated to install the residential sized meters, leaving the larger meters for city staff to install. We did that as a cost savings effort. It's substantially more to install the bigger meters. I think we're saving somewhere around $240,000 to $250,000 by doing those ourself. So they quoted $582,683.69 for the installation of 4,659 meters. Note that that price is priced per meter. So there's going to be some of these they're just not going to install, and we'll end up probably doing a few on our own. We're only going to get charged for what they actually install. PMI works closely with Metron Farnay and has a lot of experience with installing their meters. Now, they have an appointment scheduling service that offers night and weekend appointments for residents. They will also complete this installation within a six-month period, providing pictures of each installation. City staff is unable to offer this flexibility and do to this in such a timely manner as PMI can. The purchase of the meters is already factored into the water and sewer rate model, but spread out over a longer timeframe. The addition of the installation and the shorter purchase timeline would increase water rates by 1% and sewer rates by 2% in year one. And I will add, that's only if you decide to do that, right? When we put these in, we assume there's going to be a cost savings. Problem is, I can't tell you what that is. I can't put that in the model. That's a 10-year model, right? So, but I wanted to know if we did decide to put this in the model, right? What would that actually cost, assuming an increase in year one? We also have the option to spread that cost out over 10 years, or would you have the option to wait and see what savings, you know, we see from this? You know, the hope is that not only would this stabilize rates, but could help improve rates. Your rate right now, part of your rate, you're paying for that water loss, right? Because if you're making three gallons and you're only getting paid for two, you got to make that up somewhere. It's made up in rates. So also, we currently pay $8,000 annually for meter read software that we could eliminate. There would also be revenue generated, you know, due to the less water loss. So between the two factors, we believe the meters will pay for themselves and would actually help stabilize and reduce rates. Just wanted you to note that the pending $1.5 million allocation from the state for the sewer fund was not factored into this rate estimate. If we had put that in, there would be, you know, be a wash. Maybe we'll break even. Administration is recommending purchasing the Metron Farnay meters as presented, as long as the outside resources will also be approved to expedite the installation. If the purchase is approved, the administration will go out to bid for the installation of the meters. So hopefully, we could find more savings in the installation as well. Any questions? If I can't answer it, then Lenny's going to do it for you because.
Well, you answered mine.
I don't have a question, but I would definitely be inclined to go with the, the wait to adjust the rates option until we see what this does and just keep with our, you know, we'll look at the rates every year on a regular schedule and just stick with that.
I would support that wholeheartedly. I could not support a 1 to 2% increase in the water rates right now, especially given what we got coming down the pike as we just spoke about for 30, $42 million. There's a lot happening. The, these meters sound great. I mean, hopefully they're, they last, how long do they last? Do these last longer?
About 12 years.
These are the 10 to 12 years ones?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's also what the other ones are predicted, but you know.
So how do you get to 101.5% accuracy?
I don't know, and I, that's, that's what they boast, and I questioned the same thing. I'm like, well, how can you be better than 100%? But Lenny, you know how they can be better than 100%?
I'm not sure on that exactly. It's just that it's got to be their, like a certain percent, they must be within like plus or minus like 5%, 2% or something like that. So that's probably how they figure it.
Interesting.
So it's it's an over, how much over or under they are range, not percent of accuracy, you know?
So if we receive the one point five million, which I'm confident we will, according to a neighbor of mine, then there'll be no rate adjustments, correct?
Well, you don't, you don't have to do a rate adjustment through this. I'm just saying if you wanted to plug it in the model.
Right.
So I had them plug in the one point five, and if you wanted to add this in year one, you would actually see just a slight decrease in the rate, almost nominal.
Likes that word better than increase.
But like I said, I I can't tell you what it's gonna save. I wouldn't factor it in, and we don't have to factor it in. Let's get them in. Let's see where we're at a year from now, two years from now, and see if, you know, what the savings is. And then it'll all also help us kind of centralize if there's something else going on in the system somewhere as well.
And I know you're working to find how we're losing that much water, right? The thirty-seven percent?
Yeah, like I said, and I know Lenny can probably talk on it better than I can. There's a percent you look at a new system, you'd wanna look at ten percent or less. We have an older system, older community. I mean, I'd like to see that under twenty. Maria, I'm not gonna put you on the spot cuz you know nothing about this. You know anything about water loss and communities and what percent they normally average? Uh people that do our rates said um community like ours should be under twenty, um ten to fifteen ideally.
Yep, ten to fifteen for a community of your age, um newer communities, less than ten percent is is expected. But older communities, yep, ten, ten to fifteen is what you should strive for, is reasonable.
We have a lot of work to do then.
But these will make it easier to kind of get a feel for what areas we're seeing that in, or how much of that's just from just really old meters.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just so efficient now. I mean, it's gonna save us money on billing, and then there's a lot of advantages to the homeowner because they can have leak alerts now, where if they've got, you know, a leaking toilet or whatever it may be, it'll notify them immediately if they're set up for the alerts. If you're on vacation, you'll know if you have a problem. Uh you get, you can get freeze alerts. Um I think Lenny did a good job of listing and that uh ancillary paperwork there. All the benefits, both for the city as well as the residents.
All right, does anybody have any ques- further questions for Mr. Shipman or for Lenny? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes. Agenda item ten, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Call the roll, please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Okay, we move into city manager's report.
Brownfield redevelopment authority met on July tenth to approve the reimbursement agreement for the Brownfield plan for the victory and redevelopment. The permit for demolition of the hotel has been approved and is ready to be issued. All residents should have received their two thousand twenty-four summer tax bill, which is due by September fifteenth. If you are age sixty-two and over or are permanently disabled, and your income for the preceding calendar year did not exceed forty thousand dollars, you are eligible to apply for a deferment in the treasurer's office. This form must be completed and signed each year between July first and September fifteenth, and will defer any penalty on your summer tax until February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Early voting starts on Saturday, July twenty-seventh from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM here at city hall, and lasts for nine consecutive days, including weekends, until Sunday, August fourth. Early voting allows voters to vote their ballot and put it into the tabulator themselves, just like on election day. For questions about early voting, please contact the city clerk's office. Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation Department is currently running the following programs at the Kearns Community Center. Center of Senior Walk Days on Wednesdays from eleven AM to one PM, Sewing Club Tuesdays, eleven AM to twelve-thirty PM, Crochet Club Thursdays, eleven AM to twelve-thirty PM, and Family Fun Night Fridays from six PM to nine PM. Please contact Mount Clemens Recreation for more information. On our upcoming events, we have the Uptown Friday Night Concert Series continuing on Friday, July nineteenth from seven PM to nine PM, featuring Strictly Fine. The main stage for that event will be on the corner of North Walnut and McComb Place. Again, the Uptown Friday Night Concert, Friday, July twenty-sixth, seven PM to nine PM, featuring the Joe Allen Band. Main stage for that is again at the corner of North Walnut and McComb Place. And again, the Friday Night Concert Series, Friday, August second, seven PM to nine PM, featuring the Tom Bartileme Quartet. And the north stage for that will be on McComb Place in front of O'Halloran's Public House. Coming up is the Park at Family Fun Night, free movie Under the Stars, Tuesday, August sixth, located on McComb Place in front of O'Halloran's Public House. Event starts at six PM, live music, six-thirty PM. Momford and Son, not Mumford and Son. You you really disappointed our deputy clerk on that one. She read it, thought it was Mumford and Son, and she was like, running to find a ticket and get a spot. So um but Momford and Son is a nice, right? Runner-up, um and the movie will be at eight-fifteen, which is Trolls Band Together. So be live music, kids' activities, airbrush tattoos, free giveaways. Come on down and have some fun on Family Fun Night.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Shipman? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our second opportunity for the public to address the commission. Again, we ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and abide by our two-minute rule. Um we invite anyone who would like to comment to come to the, to come to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we will move on to commissioner comments, and this time we will start with Commissioner Fournier.
Uh first of all, thank you to Elizabeth Taylor for signing up for the beautification committee again. Thought I jumped ahead there before Eric did. And um obviously, thank you again, Maria, for everything you do. And I know this has been a huge project, the numbers are pretty staggering, and it's a little scary as we enter into this. But I know that a lot of groundwork has been done, and I believe that we're moving forward in the best way possible. So and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McGarrett.
It's two things. I am excited. I I it it took a lot for me to sit still. Great Lakes Water Authority is gonna give a lot of benefits to our residents, a lot. Today, it's not I, but today, we were approved for the RAP funding again in McComb Community Action Center. So we hadn't had it. We were paying water bills up to three thousand like I've been announcing, but that RAP restarted right back up. And so then also to find out that our weatherization program, they said if we got ours today, theirs is, theirs is coming very soon, where it pays more than the water bill. It does a lot more. In order to be eligible for that, you have to be under Great Lakes Water Authority. So we are moving good in Mount Clemens. It's gonna, it's gonna be a blessing to all of us. The other thing was raffle tickets are still for sale um to help defray the cost of our parade. They are a hundred dollars apiece, but you can get ten people to put you in ten dollars, and you got a hundred dollar ticket, and each person could win a thousand dollars if we buy the ticket. So you wanna see someone um on the parade committee, myself, Mr. Eric, Michelle, um to purchase those tickets. So get ten people to put in ten dollars, and I'll get you your tickets. Thank you.
And they can call the city manager's office, I'm sure, and he'll connect you with one of you to buy your ticket. Oh.
Still pushing.
Thank you.
You got two more lives.
I'll take one of those, Eric.
There you go. Commissioner, you are.
Thank you. Coming in at that sort of the tail end of the project, I know there's a lot of work that happened before um I sat at this table, but heard such great things about teamwork, so I want to thank you all for working together on that. I just felt we had made some big decisions tonight. It feels a little historical, a little scary, a lot of money, worse most. But um sometimes you have to have a leap of faith, so I also agree it's the right thing to do, and I appreciate the work everybody put towards it. And uh that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick.
Thank you. Uh first, also, thank you, Maria, for everything you and your team have done. Thank you, Greg, for all the, definitely not in your position description stuff you've been doing to make this happen. I appreciate it. Thank you, Lenny, for keeping everything running, just a couple more years. Keep it hanging in there. But thanks, thanks to everybody that's that's been.
Yeah.
Burning the midnight oil to to get this over the finish line, calling our elected leaders to get them to push things through and work through the bureaucracy and all that stuff. And yes, uh one step closer. Uh I'd like to thank the Historic Commission for the presentation they arranged at the library for the history of Selfridge. It was great presentation. Uh strongly recommend anybody that's interested in the history of our city or our region to find out what other presentations they have coming up. Again, as as Mayor Pro Tem Fournier said, uh thank you, Elizabeth, for continuing to serve on the beautification committee. Uh and if anybody else is interested in serving on the Historic Commission, the Beautification Committee, Parks and Rec Advisory Board or others, there's more information available on our website, and I would encourage anyone who's interested uh to check it and and put your name in the hat.
Thank you. Commissioner Calhoun.
Uh I am also very thankful to you, Maria. Um just as Commissioner Yor mentioned, uh coming in at the tail end of this and never having spent this kind of money on anything. Uh with anyone here ever. Um this, it was a lot to walk into. Um and it it is still a lot, um not just for us, but for residents. And um I mean, overall, I mean, we can always wish that things, you know, went differently at different times, but think we did what was best and what we had. We couldn't have done that without the teamwork and the partnerships that um that the administration, that you, Greg, and you, Laura, um and that everyone played a part in. So I'm I'm very happy that we're moving on to the next step, and water is so important. Um we all need it, and so um you know, I'm I'm excited to move on to the next step. And um I'm also excited that, as you mentioned, uh that we have hopefully options in the future, um in the near future for folks who are going to be impacted by um potential costs. And so I know that's a concern for a lot of residents, and I'm hoping that we'll continue to advocate and and seek those sources of um deframing of costs for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto. It's always the easiest. I do wanna uh invite everybody to the Cracker House. On October fifth, we're having our cemetery walk, and this year we are highlighting fire department. So we have, I think, five or six firemen who have passed away, who um were in the Mount Clemens Fire Department, and we will be highlighting them on our tour. So and we were also, I think we're going to be talking to you about some memorabilia that I understand the fire department has. Uh I think they're meeting with um, can't remember his name now. Dave, right, um to talk to him about some things, and I think it's gonna be really exciting. So if you're interested, it's October fifth, and it's at the um Clinton Grove, I had to think of it, Clinton Grove Cemetery.
At what time?
Pardon?
At what time?
Oh, no yet. I'm just kidding. Um normally, it starts, I think the first tour is like at ten and that. But um I think it's gonna be really exciting. Uh they're, they've been working really hard doing research on these firefighters and um very interesting uh history. So if anybody's interested, you can call the Cracker House. Thank you.
Excellent. Um I wanna, of course, ditto whatever everybody else said, Maria. I mean, I, how many times the team has talked in the in the last year is probably more than you ever anticipated or ever desired uh to talk to any of us. But uh thank you for, I mean, literally going to battle with us in Harrison Township, and um that was uh an experience I'll never forget. I think I still have a PTSD from the planning commission meeting. But um you know, I can't stress enough how many times um, you know, things came up and we had to pivot, and this team worked very hard to do that and to make the deadlines set that were. I mean, I have been screaming from the mountaintop anytime a legislate, legislator was asking us how this was going. Um I made sure that at SEMCOG and our regional organization, um anytime anyone asked me about um the process of DWSRF, while we were extremely grateful for the funding, um the timetables made it nearly impossible to do such a huge project. Uh I can understand some of the other projects that they funded were not quite as large and um substantial. Um so maybe those timelines were a little more realistic, but uh it it's definitely something that the state maybe should take a look at, the process, because I think it put pressure to make decisions that were difficult to think all the way through, right? Um because of the timeline. Um so I really appreciate the stress that you were under and that that uh the decisions that you made were not easy. Um and I often walked in and Greg was in muck boots and um like outdoor wear because he had to go to the field or was, again, knocking in the rain on doors down the, down Cracker Boulevard to try to guess, get us property or easements. I mean, just really above and beyond, so thank you to both of you. Um yeah. Um I will have a coffee talk on Tuesday, August thirteenth at nine-thirty AM at John's Family Grill. Um there will not be an evening coffee talk in August because I'm taking August off. So there will be, um September, we will resume both morning and evening coffee talks. Um the State of the City address is October twenty-fifth at eight AM. That date did change, so I don't know if anyone marks the eighteenth in their calendar. October twenty-fifth at eight AM at the Emerald Theater. Um they uh the tickets will be available through the McComb County Chamber website. If you call our office, of course, we will, we can direct you on how to get tickets. I believe they are thirty-five dollars apiece. Um and that's all I have this evening, and I, so I will entertain a motion to uh go into closed session to discuss city manager annual performance review. Somebody has to.
I move to go into closed session to discuss the city manager annual performance review.
Support.
Yes.
Uh could the um minutes reflect that the city manager gave written authorization for us to proceed to closed session on this matter?
Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will go, we will have a five-minute recess, and then we will go into closed session. Okay, welcome back to open session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Uh any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.
Good night.